Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the July 30th, 2012 Orlando City Council meeting. We're going to begin today's proceedings with our invocation offered today by Pastor Dexter Sanders, founder and director of Rock Orlando Center of Transformation, which he founded and has led for the last six years. Pastor Sanders is currently leading an initiative called Transformation Paramore, which seeks to bring spiritual, physical, and emotional transformation to the citizens of the Paramore community and eventually the entire city. Since arriving in Orlando six years ago, Pastor Sanders has worked in the area of evangelism, especially specifically with youth and homeless individuals. After the invocation, we'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance led today by District Three Commissioner Robert Stewart. If everyone would please join me in standing.
Let us pray. Father God, we just thank you for this awesome opportunity that you've bestowed upon us today. Father, we thank you for the very rising of the sun this morning and for the very air that we breathe. Father, we realize that we're not here today because we've been so good or because we've gotten it right, but simply because of your grace and your mercy, compassion, and love for us. And so for this, we say thank you. We pray, Father, for the shepherd of this city, Mayor Dyer, and elected and non-elected officials that help him to bring this city to do the things that you've called it to do. And so bless us, Father, that we will work together in the spirit of love, that this city of Orlando will be the city that you've called it to. These blessings and all others we ask in your name. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk, I want to call the meeting to order. Would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Orti?
Here.
Mr. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Lyman?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
First order of business is consideration of the minutes from the July 9th, 2012 workshop, agenda review, and city council meetings. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Stewart. On favor of the motion, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's move to awards, presentations, and recognitions, and I want to call on Scott Zollers for a very significant recognition. Scott?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. We're here today to recognize 28 years of service by a city employee. Diana McDonald started with the city in 1984 as a part-time hostess in the City Hall cafeteria. She transferred to the Parking Division in 1985 as a full-time parking enforcement officer, where she patrolled the downtown streets enforcing parking regulations and acting as an ambassador to the city. In 1998, after 13 years with the Parking Division, Diana transferred to the Orlando International Airport as an airport safety officer directing traffic, giving directions, and providing information to visitors. Less than a year later, Diana came back to the Parking Division as a parking enforcement specialist. In 2001, Diana then transferred within the Parking Division to a position as an accounting clerk in the violations program. Given her extensive experience in the field, there wasn't a question that Diana couldn't answer, and everybody knows there's a lot of questions when you get parking tickets. During her tenure with the city, Diana has received several team merit awards for various accomplishments with her coworkers. Diana raised four children, two boys and two girls, while working with the city of Orlando. Her children have blessed her with six grandchildren, five boys, and one girl, ranging in ages from eight through 19. She married her husband, Tim, in 2003. She's looking forward to a long retirement, traveling across the country, enjoying her children and grandchildren. Diana spent 26 years with the Parking Division and will be greatly missed, but we wish her the best as she enters into retirement. Please join me and our coworkers in wishing Diana good luck and a long, happy retirement.[272.02][272.02](Applause)
and many of our downtown hotel general managers. We're fortunate to have the Leonard family with us today as well. Jay is the general manager of the Wyndham Hotel, and he co-chairs this year's blood drive with his daughter Carly. Carly was the inspiration behind this year's blood drive, and she was diagnosed with osteosarcoma in October of 2010. She underwent chemotherapy and multiple blood transfusions during her treatment, and the downtown Orlando hotels will be joining forces on August 2nd for Give Life Orlando, a blood donation. Buses will be stationed throughout, and I have a proclamation that I want to read related to that. Would all, everybody that's here from Central Florida Hotel and Lodging and Association with the Give Life Orlando drive, stand up and be recognized.[408.18][408.18](Applause) Whereas more than 4.5 million patients need blood transfusions each year in the U.S. and Canada, and whereas only 38 percent of the U.S. population is eligible to donate blood, and whereas one pint of blood can save up to three lives, and whereas much of today's medical care depends on a steady supply of blood from healthy donors, and whereas if only 1 percent of all Americans would give blood, blood shortages would disappear for the foreseeable future, and whereas the Central Florida Hotel and Lodging Association, Church Street District, and Downtown Development Board have joined together to create Give Life Orlando, and whereas Give Life Orlando will make it easy for all downtowners to give blood to those in needs, now therefore, I, Mayor Buddy Dyer, in recognition of the importance of donating blood to save lives, do hereby proclaim August 2nd, 2012 to be Good Give -- I'm sorry, Give Life Orlando Day in the city of Orlando, and urge all citizens to recognize the critical importance of donating blood. By recognizing the need for blood donations and how easy it is to donate, we can save thousands of lives each year. Why don't you guys come on down? All right, as part of my update, Commissioners, we began the public budget process earlier this month with a presentation from Rebecca and Ray, and the next step is always the annual budget address, my opportunity to add additional information and context to our proposed budget. In the past years, we've done this as a separate workshop, but given the fact that this is largely a continuation budget that everybody has voted on except Commissioner Ray last year, with no intended increases in millage, I've elected to just incorporate the budget address into my mayor's update remarks. At the conclusion of my remarks, Rebecca will give us an update on the budget and the budget process, and when she finishes, each of you will have the opportunity to comment on the budget or ask questions, and then we'll move back into the regularly scheduled commission meeting. This is, if you can believe it, the 10th budget address that I have given as mayor of the great city of Orlando, and as we have said many times before, deciding where to allocate our resources to best serve our residents is never easy, even in the best of times. But the budget challenges we have faced over the last four years have been unprecedented. I'm incredibly proud of this council's ability to rise to those challenges in the midst of the worst economic condition since the Great Depression, with revenues plummeting and expenses outside of our control like fuel and health care especially escalating. We've kept taxes low while continuing to deliver superior city services, while shrinking the size of government with only, the only new spending going toward fire and police protection, while we also continue to build our reserves and while keeping our commitments to our pension funds. And now, it has not been easy, but we've made many difficult but necessary decisions about where to cut back and where to invest our increasingly limited resources. And as a result of these decisions, Orlando is in the best financial shape of any major city in the state of Florida. The budget we are presenting for this fiscal year maintains that financial strength and standing while continuing to deliver superior city services and keeping our tax rate low for our citizens. This budget is another step in leading our city through recession and into recovery. It's a budget that minimizes taxes and delivers the highest levels of service possible so that our government can support the private sector and support Orlando's residents to continue to fuel our economic recovery. This budget maintains our superior police and fire protection and public works services. It continues to invest in our neighborhoods, and it contains no new spending with the exception of two relatively small exceptions. The first, Commissioner Sheen, is the purchase of new land to expand the footprint of our city's signature park, Lake Yola Park, and the second is a 3 percent cost of living increase for city staff. And as you know, our employees voluntarily gave up salary increases to help us reduce costs over the past two years, and this year, we're honoring our commitment to return to cost of living increases in a better fiscal year. In most budget speeches, this is where the elected official might talk about the major new projects or programs that tax dollars are funding, and as our budget for the fiscal year ahead is a continuation of what we call a basics budget, one might conclude that we don't have much to talk about, or maybe we're not doing anything unremarkable. I submit to you that that is not anything but the case. To illustrate that point, I want to do something a little different this year. Rather than focus solely on the specific services or program that this budget maintains, I want to talk about the value of the services to our Orlando residents. The average city household pays $38.86 per month in property taxes, $38.86. In return for those $39, we get police protection and safe neighborhoods. We get fire protection at a level that's better than 99 percent of the cities in the United States of America. We get parks, we get ball fields, we get green space, we get our streets cleaned more often, and our potholes fixed faster than any major city in the state of Florida. We're able to maintain and expand our roads and our sidewalks, and we get a multitude of other city services. Now think about that. Think about what $39 does in comparison to other monthly bills that we get. A basic cable TV package without the NFL Network runs about $70, okay? The average electric bill is about $110. Average car insurance, $125. Home alarm system, $40. Think about that. What does it mean? What it really means that you pay the same price for an alarm system as you do for police officers and first responders that show up to your house when that alarm goes off. Or you pay three times as much money per month to safeguard your car as you do your entire neighborhood. The other important point to make is that if we pass on the full cost of those services to the taxpayers, their bill would easily be twice as much as that $39. Now, we make these comparisons not to brag about our city services, but to show our residents exactly what they're getting in return for their hard-earned property tax dollars and to illustrate the relative bargain that they receive as residents of the city of Orlando. The budget that we have brought forward ensures that we are able to provide taxpayers with that bargain once again in the year ahead, and in a few minutes Rebecca's going to show us how we've managed to do this. She will also spend some time talking about future budgets. You know, always know that we're not just thinking a year ahead, we're thinking five years ahead in this city. Commissioners, the choices that we have made as a council over the last few years were made with the aim of not rocking the boat when it came to our economic recovery. And every year since 2008, we've said that our government did not want to put more pressure on a family that was in danger of losing their home or someone who had just lost a job. Our strategy has been to give as much time as possible for our local and national economy to recover. To make that happen, we took the necessary steps to slash our budget amid the economic climate when we expected revenues to continue to shrink and costs to continue to rise. And from the very beginning, we made it very clear that our city government was up to the task of taking on this burden and living within our means. But we also said that this scenario cannot be continued forever. State lawmakers, through mechanisms like property tax reform and the impending passage of Amendment Four this fall, have ensured that we're going to see our revenues continue to decline. What this means is that at some point, if your revenues are declining and your expenses continue to increase, you're going to reach a point where there's nothing left to cut besides police and fire. So you have to make adjustments, or you have to generate more revenue. We have time, and we have options available to us as a city council, but we're going to have to address this imbalance starting next year. And I'm confident that this city council is up to the task of doing what's necessary to continue to provide strong, efficient, fiscally responsible government. In closing, I want to thank Rebecca, Ray, Byron, and all the department directors for their work to craft a balanced budget this year and every year. I want to thank every single member of our city family. I'm proud to work alongside so many hard-working public servants, as was just illustrated with a 28-year service award. You come to work for the city, you stay here till you retire, pretty much. Your dedication and passion for serving Orlando's residents is one of the reasons I'm excited, and I know every member of our city council is excited to get up and come to work every day. I also want to thank our residents, our business community, our civic and faith-based leaders for being part of the annual process to balance our resources and provide the services we all depend on every day. We look forward to public input in September. And finally, and probably most importantly, I want to thank our city commissioners. A decade ago, when I became mayor, this city council made a commitment that we would show our residents where their money goes, we would illustrate why spending is important to our city, and we would demonstrate the benefits of the services that we provide. And this council has kept that promise, and the result is that our city is in the best financial shape of any major city in the state of Florida. Now, that concludes, Commissioner Ings, how you can keep it to short time and still deliver a lot of information and message.[1101.33][1101.33](Laughter) So that concludes my formal remarks on this, and I want to call on Rebecca to come up and give us a more full-on watch presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am pleased to present to you the budget that we will be using next fiscal year upon adoption in September. So first of all, I'll just show you, first I'd like to point out that at your seats you should have a copy of the budget in brief. This is a sort of a short condensed version of the budget, and you may review that at your convenience, and if there are any questions or other issues that you might have in examining that, don't hesitate to contact my office, and we will make arrangements to sit down with you and discuss it further. You'll also be getting, I believe, in the next day or two, correct? A more complete and more detailed version of this budget that will be delivered to your offices. So if there's anything that we can do for you, any additional information, explanation, answer any questions, please do not hesitate to contact us. Well, we came to you on July 9th with a budget and with some projections with regard to revenue and expenses, and we're pleased to say that as we went through the process of refining those, that we are bringing them back to you with no change, and that is that we will be proposing revenues of $354,292,717 for the 2012-13 budget fiscal year. And we will be proposing the same number in expenses as this particular slide indicates. And once again, we have made only one real major change in what you see here in expenses, and that is that we have moved our facilities organization out from under a pure general fund function to be what we call an internal service fund, and that then allows for each of the functions across the city to pay directly the charges that they are using for facilities maintenance in their particular area. And this will then give us a better picture of what the cost for each function in the city actually is. In summary, we have no change in the millage rate, as the mayor indicated. We're leaving that at $5.65 per thousand dollars of valuation, taxable valuation. We are adding cost of living increases that we agreed to in our union contracts a few years ago, and those are also being extended to our non-represented employees within the city. No new positions are being added. We're moving forward on the same set of positions and the same programs that we've had in the past year. We have, and I think this is very important and sometimes not really recognized as much as it should be, and that is that this city is very, very faithful about making the necessary contributions into the pension plans and into our other post-employment benefits plan so that these benefits will be appropriately funded and that these pension funds will be healthy, financially healthy, and will be available as those retirees move through their retirement. And finally, the only other new item other than the Colas that the mayor indicated is an internal loan that will allow us to purchase some additional property to round out our boundaries for Lake Yola Park, our signature park in the city, and I think that's an excellent investment. As a, I guess, a practicing accountant, we look at the purchase of land as being the exchange of one asset for another. In other words, this is not in the same sense that spending ends up extinguishing an asset. In this case, we're exchanging an asset, and we have a very long-lived asset and a very important asset in our city signature park, and so we will see that park rounded out as a result of this year's budget. I think it's really important to look and see all of the expenditure reductions that we have worked on over the last four to five years to get an understanding of why this city is in the best financial condition of any city, any major city in the state of Florida. And that is that as we began to face the economic downturn, what we did was to reduce the size of government, to go through all of our government services, to find those that were most leveraged, and then to eliminate those that perhaps were not. And as a result, we reduced a total of 459 positions across the city, none of which were positions located in our police and fire departments. These were all civilian positions. I say that, civilian positions in police and fire. We had, for instance, a situation where we changed the way that we were reporting, that police officers were reporting some of their information, and that then gave us the ability to transfer those employees to other open positions within the city and to be able to cut our costs in the police department. But all of these are civilian positions. None are sworn, none are police officers or firefighters that are on the front lines. And you'll note that the expenditures that we have reduced as a result of that, you know, totals to a little over $14 million a year. That is a significant amount of money that we are saving as a result of the efficiencies that we found. But these are not the only ones that we found. We had a number of other efficiencies that were identified by departments and offered up as ways that we could live within our means. We reduced our mowing and maintenance for about $800,000 a year since fiscal 2009. Holiday bonuses that were given to the city employees were eliminated. That's about $300,000 a year. We reduced our technology management contracts, and that's been about $500,000 annually. Reduced some FPR operating hours when some of our parks and recreation facilities were underutilized, and that saved us $450,000 a year. We reduced police departments overtime and lineup pay because of actually deploying our police department in a different way, in a new and different way, and that saved $2.9 million a year. And as I indicated before, we automated the OPD reporting for $1.1 million a year. We reduced community organization funding, $400,000 annually, and we had a reduction in capital improvement projects which totaled $4.5 million per year since 2011, and reduced our fleet replacement funding, $2.8 million since 2011 as well. So we have really, and this is not everything, by the way, these are just some highlights, but to give you and the public an understanding that we have done a lot to cut our expenditures to the bone, and I really believe wholeheartedly that we have done an excellent job of that. That's not to say that there's not something else out there that we might be able to identify, and we're constantly on the hunt for these things, but that we have done a great job in this city in finding ways that we can cut our costs. But the costs are not the whole story, and if you look at this graph, you can see how our property tax revenue have declined since 2009, actually a percentage change of almost 28 percent down. And we say, we see no sign of this recovering anytime soon, and there are reasons for that. If we look at the property tax reform, just the things that have already passed, property tax reform, and then the Amendment One that came after that, you can see the effect that that's had on our taxable valuation in the city of Orlando, you know, really coming to about a billion, over a billion dollars a year in taxable valuation, that that particular, those particular laws have had impact on us. And our property tax equivalent of that is over $6 million a year at our current millage rate. And you can see what our valuation impact is by homestead and commercial property. That's about a 60-40 impact between our homestead and our commercial property. In 2013, our taxable base in the city rose by less than 1 percent, .6 percent. Our homesteaded property actually declined a percent and a half, and our non-homesteaded property increased by a percent. And currently, our maximum growth in taxable value, because everything now under the law is capped, so we can now calculate what our maximum growth can be, and it's capped at 8.8 percent or $9 million. If we grew as much as we could possibly grow, it will only be $9 million a year, and that is not going to be a significant amount, enough amount of money to solve our problems If Amendment Four passes in November, it's going to get even worse, and that's going to cap our maximum growth to 4.7 percent or $4.8 million. And this is the only revenue source that has significant growth potential in all of our revenues. So if this one, which only makes up about less than a third of our total budget, doesn't grow substantially, then we have a hard time addressing our cost increases, which typically are in about a 4% to 5% range each year when we look at the cost increases overall. And that's not doing anything new, that's just simply being able to pay our bills as we go through the year. Other revenue sources have also been affected. In 2012, the state legislature considered bills to either modify or completely eliminate our business tax program. That's about $7.7 million a year, and if that gets eliminated, then that's gone forever. A legislative change in the classification of bundled services for communication services tax has created about a million dollars, just a little bit less than a million dollars of negative. impact on our revenue streams as well. And it's already been a declining revenue source for the city in any event. And then reductions in rates charged by OUC will have a direct impact on our franchise fee equivalent revenue that we receive from OUC each year to the tune of about $4.4 million for some of the rate reductions that they are considering at this point. Some of our costs are not controllable either. For instance, just the steps that we have in our police and fire departments as policemen and firefighters get more and more experience and become more and more skilled, their increases in their salaries are about $2.5 million annually, and these are things which we have committed to and will continue to commit to, and so that has to be paid. Our pension contributions just this year increased about $1.6 million, and we had a 5% increase in health insurance, which frankly is pretty modest in comparison to a lot of these numbers that you may hear out there. But that's still $1 million that we had to come up with. And then fuel prices. You know, we use over 2 million gallons of gasoline and almost a million gallons of diesel fuel each year, and a 10% change in prices results in about a $700,000 impact. So these are all things which we really cannot control. We can't, you know, manage our way out of these things. These are things which are going to be there, and we've got to figure out a way to deal with them. We've done a number of, I guess, deferrals, if you will. We've deferred some capital improvements and maintenance over the last two years. We're going to go into a third year now of reduced contribution to our CIP fund, and what that means is that we have less funding to replace very important assets in the city, such as, you know, repairing streets. We still repair our streets, but we can't go in and do the kind of the deep dive, the, I guess, facelifts, if you will, of some of our streets and other areas of our city. And so that's, you know, something we can do again this year, and we are recommending to do it again this year. But it's not something that we can sustain over time. It's something that's got to be addressed in the future. We're not really meeting the required allotment that we need each year for maintenance. We're simply deferring it. And so as a result, when we do that, we get more emergency repair requests, and those, of course, are not as efficient as being able to take care of this on a more periodic and routine maintenance program. In our vehicle replacement area, we have not impacted our public safety vehicles. All of those are on their regular replacement routine. But we have, on our non-public safety vehicles, extended the estimated useful life. And actually, the overall condition of our fleet is very, very good. Even at a half-funding that we've been doing over the past few years, we're better positioned than most governments when it comes to replacing our fleet. But we are seeing some increased costs as some of these vehicles get older and require more maintenance. I think another very important fact to consider is that since 2009, our public safety costs have grown from $183.7 million, or 49.5% of our budget, to $201.7 million, which is 56, almost 57% of our budget. It's continued to increase despite the decline that we have seen in our avalorum tax revenue. And I think this is one of the most telling signs, and that is that you can see this graph that we put in front of you. From 2005 until 2011, if we added all of the tax revenues that we have in the city, and that includes avalorum tax, sales tax, utility services tax, municipal revenue sharing, business tax, and communication service tax, and added all that together, and we reduced it by, or we compared it to the amount that we needed for public safety, we would have had money left over, once we added all those and paid for public safety. But in 2011, or 2012, and then again in 2013, you can see the red bars are negative, and that means that we're spending more than our tax revenue to maintain our police and fire functions in the city. And as you can see, it's growing in the wrong direction. And that's one of the things that we really have to begin to look at and have to begin to analyze. We have time to do that. We're going to be doing that over the next fiscal year, but it's something we've got to give some attention to. We have used reserves, but never in excess of our 25% maximum reserve target that we have, that's in our policies. We've always maintained our maximum reserve level. But if we had additional money left over, we have in the past used that to help us to fund our budget each year. And you can see from fiscal 2009 through 2013, the amount of budgeted fund balance that we have rolled in. And you'll note that in 2009, 10, and 11, we never actually used that. We actually spent, underspent our budget in those fiscal years enough that we never had to draw on that excess. But you'll note in 2012, we are now projecting that we're going to need to spend about $6.8 million of that. And that's an indication that there's an end point in the future when we can no longer rely on that. And so it's not something that we necessarily have to fix this year, but it's something that all of you should be aware of, and that we're going to be talking with you about that, and coming up with a longer-term solution than what we've been using in the last year or two. Well, the good news is that this year's budget is balanced. We've maintained all of our core services, and we have not degraded the city's financial position in any way. We're still maintaining our 25% reserves. We're still in great financial shape, and we'll get through this year just fine. But our challenges are in the 2014 fiscal year and beyond, because the growth in our revenue sources are going to be very limited, and to the extent that we have increased costs, it's going to be very difficult to close these budget gaps in the future years. We project for our public safety, our core functions, public safety expense to continue to go up, and it's going to create a structural imbalance that has got to be addressed, you know, by either deciding that we're going to have to eliminate some programs in the city, which, you know, certainly is something you can consider, and then also, we may have to reduce our expectations with regard to public safety. However, we always have the ability to look at some revenues and do some revenue enhancements and go down that route as well. And we're not going to leave any stone unturned as we go through this next year. All of these will be investigated, will be presented to you, and we will have a number of issues presented to you as we go through this next fiscal year. The next steps that we have in our budget process, just as a quick review, is on today. In your consent agenda, you will adopt a millage rate. This is a tentative millage rate. It has to be adopted at this point so that it can be included in the TRIM notices that are sent out by our property appraiser. On August 20th, you will have a presentation of some proposed user fee increases this year for consideration. And then September 10th, we'll have our first budget hearing, and then on September 17th, we'll have a second budget hearing, and we will adopt our budget as well as the millage rate that we will officially set at that point. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Rebecca. Just two comments. I was recently with a number of mayors, and I know at least Tampa and Jacksonville, their property tax revenues continued to decrease by a significant amount. I think that's the way for most of the cities around the state of Florida, other than Fort Lauderdale, I know, had a, I don't think it was a double-digit increase, but it was more than half a percent or whatever we have. And I'm not sure about Miami, but a lot of those condos have filled up down there. So that's good news for us, that we're headed in the right direction, and some of the other cities have not hit the bottom of the trough yet in terms of property values. And then the second, I was at a U.S. Conference of Mayors Executive Leadership Meeting. It's about 40 mayors. And I can tell you that our pensions are in better shape than any city, not just in Florida, but across the country. I was sitting there listening to other mayors lament their positions on pensions, and I was talking to the mayor of Racine, Wisconsin, and mentioned to him where we were with our pensions, and he said, "Don't say anything, because they're going to throw stuff at you if you say what good shape you're in," because everybody else was in not such good shape. So it's just evidence that we've done a little bit better than some other cities. Commissioner Lyne.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and thank you for the update. You know, Rebecca, I want to ask you one thing. Is this document online? And know what the link should be? When our residents call in to make inquiries about services, we should have, you know, where they should go, but there should also be a link to how we're managing and things that we're doing in the city, particularly our budget item. And I was looking at page six. As often as we have budget hearings, and Mayor, you said this is your 10th, this is my 15th, and we seldom have much interest in our budget. And that is where, to me, the most interest ought to be, when residents call and make inquiries about services, quality of services, or any complaints. But thank you. This is our third or fourth time looking at this document. But I wanted to make just a couple of comments. I know people across the state of Florida, I've seen it happen over and over, vote on the legislators. And the legislature in the state of Florida has been very mean to its residents. But many of those residents, we know, our friends, our relatives, always vote against their best interests. And these are the kind of things that have been happening for years. This just didn't happen. But being on the front line, we are the ones who get the blame. When they go out and vote wrong, diminish their own quality of life issues through budgeting, and people who have no interest in getting this thing right on the state level, it's really, really sad when you vote against your own best interest and quality of life. So we need to pay attention to amendment four. And we've been talking about this for years on council, and it's very, very sad. And for that $39, I wanted to say just a couple of things I have observed that we've done. Our budget has taken in consideration the impact of the reduction, as we've mentioned over and over, of the less avalorum taxes, because with the market and the housing and the foreclosures, what do you do with all the caps, with all the things the legislature has done? But we have also, Mayor Dyer and counsel, and I'm proud of, we've created jobs by doing something that other cities probably would not do during this kind of recession. And that is, through our venues, we were able to create lots of jobs through the event center, and then, of course, with Dr. Phillips. And now we're getting ready to move toward the stadium. Each one of these venues increase the quality of our city and maybe bring more headquarters here. And the part I like to look at is creating jobs. So I am one of those people voting for these items because I know the need we have, and we've kept many residents and families from the brink of just going over. And many of our neighborhoods are just on the tip and end of change, and we've done very well with less, and I'm very, very, very thankful. Now, there are some other things we have done, and that's through OPD. And I know Chief Rooney made certain commitments that he's trying to keep. I know normally when I'm walking in the morning and I call in, I get so much help, especially in my own neighborhood, that I walk more often. I walk almost all the neighborhoods in the district, but we have almost 40 neighborhoods. But I'm very, very thankful. Always call, send people to neighborhood meetings. I don't know what they think our jobs are, but I'm not a police officer, and I'm very appreciative for Kevin Williams and the other officers that help in District Five. So, I mean, just no hesitation. Well, of course, Chief Rooney, no disrespect, but Orlando Fire Department is just real precious to me. I'm sorry. No, they had to come and save my life, literally, helped me in a very, very tentative moment, and I'm very, very thankful. But I just want to acknowledge this, because oftentimes neighborhoods want to complain, but they never understand where the commissioners are and how we work together. There's nobody up here independent. And of course, Mayor, even in my park, in my neighborhood, and across the city, I'm just thankful. There are things I see. I mean, I hate the litter, so maybe we need to attack, not McDonald's, that's my nephew's place, but some other stores with all the paper goods and whatnot. And so we see a lot of litter, but not nearly as much in Orlando as you see in other cities. We do our little litter index, and you know we've done real well. We've got Jody and Janos help us with that and other residents. So I'm very, very, very thankful, as the value of housing have gone down in many neighborhoods, that we still have great value in our neighborhoods, and I'm very, very thankful for the way we have handled this. We are doing more with less, and we're smarter and more creative. So I don't need any more reductions, because I'm having a hard enough time getting people to go out and clean that little strip of land that's in front of their houses that they say the city ought to do, even though we don't live on that little strip. So we've got our work cut out, but I'm thankful that this is a good report, and I'm thankful that we all work together here as a family, and none of us can do anything alone. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Remove to District Three, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Lyne, for the same comments. Let me say, first of all, Mayor, appreciate the way you address. We have said on this council over and over again that the people of Orlando get a good deal for what services they can provide, and I want to make sure that we continue to make, tell our constituents that. So I appreciate the comment. Along the same lines, let me recommend that maybe your budget address be listed separately. Somebody could go to that, as well as maybe your presentation be listed separately. The documents we have are great, but somebody's going to need to help explain through them a little bit. So having those two side by side online, separate of just a regular attendance of the meeting, let somebody be able to look at that in a short view and be able to respond, because that's very important. I've got a couple of quick questions, Rebecca. I'd like to just to kind of touch base with you on. On page eight, you mentioned, we looked at the projections for 2013, and we looked at it, the non-homestead 10% cap rose from about $108 million to $274 million. So I'm assuming that, explain the significant increase in there. Is that just anticipated prior to the 5% cap?
No, those are actual caps. So the first year that we had that cap, it was at 87, then it went down to 75 because there were some reductions. Now, it went up to 108 and then up to 274.
That's probably primarily commercial property, correct?
Yes, that is primarily commercial, particularly when you look at dollars. The dollars are significantly higher for the commercial.
But back to your other page concerning the projections, we would not anticipate, unless there is new growth, that individual new properties being built. 274 would not go up anything more than 5%?
Well, now, the 274, that particular number is the amount of valuation that is reduced by virtue of the cap being in place. That's what that number is.
That's the net amount that we would be able to be taxable.
Yes, the net amount that would be able to be taxable if that law were not in place. Correct.
Okay.
And we would anticipate that that will go up equal to the amount that the commercial property increases in value, less the 10% cap. So whatever that ends up being, for us, it doesn't really matter what the real number is. What matters is what will the 10% cap yield to us? And that would be our maximum benefit from growth that the city would have. Now, that doesn't include new construction, so you have to peel that out. But, you know, essentially, your existing valuation can only grow at that 10% range.
Well, I think we probably have a percentage, when you look at new construction, I mean, we look at 87 million in 2010 and 75 million in 2011, that probably gives you an indication that if there's not new construction, we're probably looking at a valuation going down about 8% or 10% or 12%. I mean, just if we don't continue to keep up with people growing and building on property.
The one difference in this particular cap is that it's not portable. And so as we see sales of property, you know, I'm hoping at some point in the future that we'll have some stimulation of our real estate economy, and some of these properties will change hands. And when that happens, then that, you know, that exemption goes away.
Well, from a policy standpoint...
And so we reset, we have an ability to reset. So that's going to be where our good news is going to come from, is from the resets due to sales and any new construction that we have.
From a policy standpoint, you put, this puts the cities in a very unusual position, because in an area where we want to look at good quality growth management, that... because in an area where we want to look at good quality growth management, that cities may be looking at poor growth management just to get a tax base, which is exactly the opposite of what we all be doing in the state of Florida. I mean, that's, we're creating this kind of, like, as you said, it's going to come to a head somewhere along the line, but, so now all of a sudden, if you have vacant land, do we want to leave it vacant, or do you want to rush and go do homes on it, which may not be good for all the other ripple effects that go down? Let me, on page nine, you talked a little bit about the sales tax growth, that's a little bit hard to predict. Would you do me a favor and, and I know in the process of this, provide just some information to us about where we have been for the last 10 or 12 years, and I can, we can get a chance to look and maybe try to mirror some growth, some future growth. I mean, economy turns back around, there is a positive impact on the sales tax, it's just very difficult to predict with the current formulas that are there.
Correct. And, and because of the apportionment that we do in the state, what we see here locally is not necessarily what our impact is going to be.
Exactly.
Because that, that essentially, you know, we're a contributor, if you will, to other cities from the perspective of sales tax. And I think when we look at it purely from an economist's perspective, we're not real bullish on, on high levels of growth of sales tax. I think it's going to be modest at best, and we're not going to see that. And, and keeping in mind as well that sales tax is, I believe, about $40 million this year, or have, 30? $30 million. Revenue sharing is another 10. And so how much can that really grow? Well, let's just say that we get really lucky and it grows at 10%, that's $3 million. It's not going to plug a big hole.
Well, and I think that it's also, I think they use primarily population as the criteria.
Yes.
And using, it doesn't really reflect the county seat and the amount of business that goes on in this area. So what happens is that we're having to absorb a lot of that based upon the other. So I'm, I'm in favor of a different formula, but that's, I can't rule the world yet. And then the last comment I want to make, and just reemphasize for the sake of our community, is that, and I guess you mentioned on page 13, is that if you take the ad valorem costs, and Mayor, thank you for bringing this point out, at $39 per household, average household, you take that $39 and you apply that, it is a significant shortfall in just the cost of public safety. And so we do, as I've said almost at every meet, and I can remember, we do a great job leveraging things to be able to accomplish those tasks. We would love nothing more than to go and take millions of dollars and go buy cameras to put out in police vehicles. But we have to do that in a way that allows us to leverage federal funding to accomplish that task. And so these types of things limit our ability to really do what we want to project in the future. But at the same time, we're doing a great job leveraging other costs to us to be able to, to do great things in our community by partnering with some state, but mostly federal type funding. So, thank you for that, that page, that's a very important page I'd like to share often with, with our neighborhoods. Thank you very much, Rebecca, for your, your work and your team's work. Look forward to working with you. Mayor, one quick question, I didn't see on the budget in brief, but I'm assuming, where are we on some of the facade grants and those types of things? Are we keeping those in place as last year? Those are all perfect, those are the great business simulaces that we want to try and use.
You'll recall, we had cut that and then restored it, was it last year or year before?
Right.
Sometime.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner Sheehan.
I just had, I just had something to brief, I think this is, you know, great, I mean, I don't know how it got out in the media that we're raising taxes, but we're not, so let's get clear, we're not raising taxes today. I mean, I'm getting calls already about raising taxes, and we're not doing that. But I like the, the example of the 39, the 39.08 a month. And I think it also might be helpful to see some of the value of the services that we do provide, like how much it costs when someone calls the police, in actual dollars to us. How much it costs when they call the fire department? How much it costs to actually fill a pothole, so they get an idea of, we're not just wasting money, there are actually costs associated. I think a lot of times people don't think that the things that we do have a cost associated with them. So I think, you know, I think boiling it down to the monthly amount is really good in terms of, you know, in terms of explaining that to people, but also explaining to them what these things that we do, street sweeping, all that, actually costs, so they get an idea that they are getting a good deal for the amount of money that they're spending, especially if they call the police one time. I'm pretty sure that that really exceeds that $39, you know, so if we can get some of that information, I think that would be very helpful as well. And part of my problems with the legislature as well, I know we're beating up on them pretty good, is that they're the ones that, that make these decisions on what's going to be okay on these pensions. They pass these costs on to us, and then, you know, and then we have to pay for them, and then they cut our, then they cut our budgets, so we can't pay for the costs that they say that we have to pay. So it's kind of a ridiculous way to run a, you know, a state, is that they're the ones that are actually telling us what we have to spend and then cutting all our funding. So, again, sooner or later, they're going to have to, you know, step it up, or we might have to be looking at police and fire charges and things like that, just to be able to pay our bills, which I don't like doing because I think it disproportionately hits people who can least afford it, which is homesteaded properties and things like that. But, you know, if they, if they keep forcing our hand, we're going to have to raise money somehow. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Rebecca, and the entire finance team, directors and everybody else. So we'll be back in August for a discussion related to fee increases, and then in September for the two public budget hearings. All right, that concludes that portion. I want to recognize that we have local scout troop 184 visiting us today. You guys want to stand and be recognized? I think we can tell who you are. This must go toward the government merit badge or something, right? Or you just, okay, leadership in the community, or I thought you were just here for fun. Okay, let's move into the mayor's update. Today, the Orlando Fire Department is laying to rest one of the most decorated firefighters in its 127-year history. The department, Lieutenant Mark Steiner, served the OFD from 1981 to 2011. His legacy includes several incidents of extreme bravery in which he entered homes filled with flames and rescued occupants from certain death. On one fire, Lieutenant Steiner entered the house and rescued a three-year-old boy, and then as the flames continued to engulf the house, he returned to rescue a 14-month-old infant. His personal file contains over 25 commendations and recognitions for his actions in service over his 30 years. He was a great man loved by his family, who also loved his family, served OFD with honor and pride, and our thoughts and prayers go out to the family. Commissioners, I'm excited to announce that the city of Orlando was awarded the Sterling Tree City Award from the National Arbor Day Foundation. It recognizes the city's Street City USA Growth Award. We have been receiving for this, for 10 years, and this is the second time we've achieved the Sterling Award level. The first time was back in 2000. I want to invite all Orlando residents and commissioners to participate in the 29th Annual National Night Out on Tuesday, August the 7th, which happens to be my birthday, along with city commissioners, OPD and OFD. It's an annual event that focuses on community policing and making our neighborhoods safer. And last year, the city of Orlando was ranked number one in the country for our National Night Out efforts of cities with populations between 100 and 300,000. We've been in, if not the top category, at least the top three for the past 17 years. I want to remind our residents that August 5th through the 11th is National Stop on Red Week. Red light running is one of the most preventable causes of collisions and property loss. We have implemented our Orlando Stops red light camera program, and we are expanding our program, adding five new locations throughout the city. Items of note from the agenda, we have an exciting Greenworks Orlando item. We are approving the installation of solar power cells on top of the city's fleet facility. This is a public-private partnership that will generate clean energy, and more importantly, it will generate energy savings of over $800,000 over the next couple of decades. Last September, the council approved the city's participation in a cross-territorial HUD Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant application. It's a consortium made up of 27 partners and was awarded a $2.4 million in grant funding. Over a three-year period, the grant funding will be used to develop sustainable development plans around targeted Sun Rail stations. Two headquarter operations are making the decision to open new locations in the city of Orlando. First, we are approving a job creation incentive package for National Air Cargo Group, Inc., which is the operator of scheduled and on-demand charter services worldwide, national specialized and oversized time-sensitive special air handling requirements. And in fact, they're the third-largest carrier for the Department of Defense, with more than 70% of nation's business being DoD-related. They are considering leasing 20,000 feet of space in the Millenia Lakes Boulevard area for relocation and expansion of its corporate headquarters from Michigan and New York, and plans to create 105 new high-wage, high-value jobs over the next two years. Their total capital investment for the project is about $775,000 for construction and equipment. With our strong military presence and aviation industry, we think they're a perfect fit for our community. And I'd like to acknowledge Glenn Jor, Jorger, that's Jorger like burger, Executive Vice President of National Air Cargo, who's with us here today. Do you want to stand up and give a little love? Initially, we are approving two items, ones on consent, ones on the CRA agenda, to a job creation incentive package for Exos, which is an industry leader in digital media solutions for sports teams across America. They are considering relocating its corporate headquarters from Lake Mary to downtown Orlando's GAI building. They produce products and services which range from content management systems to distribute sports context to the web, mobile and smart TV, among other mediums. They, the projected growth estimates, they will be adding 46 new high-value, high-wage jobs over the next three years and retaining 57 existing jobs with a capital investment of more than $3 million. Again, they are exactly the type of company we want in the city of Orlando. I'd like to acknowledge Matt Huggins, Executive Vice President, who is here, and Gloria LaGuang, who is with the EDC. Would you guys stand? That will move to the consent agenda, which is a number of items acted upon through a single vote of city council, and we give each of our council members an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda and update you on items of interest from their districts. We rotate the order in which they do so, and today it is Commissioner Stewart's job to lead off. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and first, our condolences to Mark Steiner's family, and we have heroes every day, and it's great to have a chance to, to acknowledge them, and when we lose them, it means a lot to us. So thank you very much. Let me cover a couple of things. One is to Sam Horsefield. Sam is a Central Florida high school sophomore who this past week won the 28th Annual Orlando City Amateur Hosted at Dubstred Country Club, a golf club. He broke the tournament record by shooting a 199. I will tell you that Sam's a sophomore, this is the second year he's won it in a row, and came in second two years ago. Sam is one of those guys that we, we'll see him on the tour pretty soon. So congratulations to Sam. I also want to say thank you for service to Officer Keith Gibson. Keith is, we'll be sharing a little bit of retirement with him this week, but, but more importantly, Keith has served our community well, and has been one of those guys that we have hundreds of, Chief, as you know, but, but when he hears bad stuff going on, he says, "Let me do it. I want to catch these guys." And we love that from Keith. And so thank you, Keith, for your years of service to the city of Orlando. This Friday night, August 3rd, check out the Lou Gardens movie date night, it's Sherlock Holmes II, please come on over. I promise it'll be a cool evening, but please come on over, enjoy that. Go to leogardens.org for more information. We're excited to have for the National Night Out, 16 parties registered for the District Three. Let me just share with you that several of the neighborhoods are actually having a community-wide party. So if you live in Rosemont, or Park Lake Island, or Owina Park, or Orwin Manor, or Audubon Park, they're doing a community-wide party on those evenings. So please contact my office or contact your neighborhood for that. If you want no more information about National Night Out, we've, Mayor's already shared with you, it's cityoforlando.net/polic. The Orlando Science Center is featuring their laser light shows every weekend now through August 18th, so while you're here for the summer, please check that out. And of course, we're having another Wawa store open up. We've annexed a piece of property over at John Young Parkway and Silver Star Road, and they'll be opening up on Wednesday, August 15th, so get out your Wawa coffee mugs. On August 15th, from 5:30 to 7:30, the Orange County Public Schools will have a sneak peek of Princeton Elementary. It's, if you haven't had a chance to drive by there yet, a ton has happened over the course of the past month. I wasn't sure they were going to get it done, but it looks like they are. So August 15th, the school board member Nancy Robinson and I will be hosting a walkthrough to get a chance to let the community see the new school, so we're excited about that. And of course, August 20th is the first day of school. A couple of items I want to mention on the agenda, Mayor, thank you for mentioning about Exos and National Cargo. Thank you for your, your commitment to our community. This is an opportunity, every time we get a chance to work with a company to come into our community, this is the kind of way we'd like to do it. We appreciate your, your service to us. Two items I want to mention on the agenda, one is the, on B6, purchase of local, a local purchase of our police cars from Don Reed Ford. It's always good to have us spend that money here locally, I appreciate that. And item B4, Commissioner, we are looking at adding cameras to public solid waste management and other items. There is some question, a little bit of confusion as to the funding, so it is actually better than what I had thought. We roughly are spending about $208,000. It includes capital investment and four years of maintenance for 75 vehicles to put cameras in those. Those are special cameras that are used not only for us to, to look at the activity around the vehicle, but also the activity of our drivers for making our drivers safer. So I appreciate the response from Kevin, yours and your, you and your staff, who got the information back, but it's a really good deal for the city, and it, it keeps us from having one claim, that money is well invested in that. It also makes us more efficient in the long term. So I appreciate that. And Mike Carroll's going to take the brunt of that, and I appreciate what Mike's, they are, Mike, thank you for, for your service. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District Four, Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor, and our prayers are with Officer Karen Long, and she's fighting breast cancer, and I just want to say that she has, she cannot get any treatment in America, in the United States, they're not going to treat her anymore, she's going to Germany. So if anyone has $100,000 they don't need, we sure can use it to help Karen, she needs to raise a lot of money. And, you know, we've been doing it with hamburger cook-offs and things like that, but we're not going to get there. So if anybody, this is, this officer is one of our best in brightest, she works at anti-bullying campaigns, she's a school resource officer, she's an amazing human being, so if anybody out there can help her, I'm pleading, if anyone can please help Officer Karen Long, we need to raise $100,000, she's an amazing human being, and she's truly deserving of this, and her family, she's got small children, her husband also works for OPD, these are great public servants, and whatever we can do to help this family, I'd love to see that happen. So, again, just to plead to anyone in the community, if they can help out, we'd love to see that. On the agenda today, item B1, the millage rate, 5.65, and the CRA rate, 1 mil, it's all not changing, it's actually staying the same, so we're glad to report that. Also today, a facade grant, item C14, Jambo Ventures, glad to see 934 and 936 Mills Avenue, going to have some, in the new facade, so we'd like to say hi to Process Architecture and Jorge Bu, we look forward to seeing what you guys are going to do, and it looks absolutely great. On item C15, the Historic Preservation Board minutes, the Trinity Lutheran Project went from being very, very controversial to a project that's been embraced by everyone, so I want to thank staff for working hard on that and get, coming to a conclusion that benefits the neighborhood and Trinity Lutheran Church as well. On item C17, the Eastern Florida Regional Planning Council, I've served on that for about 11 years now, we're glad to bring some money home, and that's going to be used for the Link Central Station and working with all of the municipalities, counties, all along the rail line to make sure that we do some good, good transit-oriented design around those rail stops. And item C18 and C19, we've already talked about Exos Digital Technologies and National Air Cargo, just wanted to point out that they're both in District Four, so, love seeing that, love seeing you guys come, and I'd love to see you come to my district. And that's all I had, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner, we'll move on to District Five, Commissioner Line.
Thank you very much. We yield to District Four. We're just glad to see the growth, it needs jobs and opportunities. It's called the city of Orlando. Thank you. And Mayor, also, I think it was Commissioner Stewart, he said, "Wawa at John Young and Silver Star." Well, there's a wawa coming near all of us, sooner or later, so we better watch out and just be careful on how we treat traditional city. Just a few announcements, I'm going to back up Commissioner Sheehan regarding the Karen Long Fund, as a two-time survivor of cancer... As a two-time survivor of cancer, I was just really happy to be there to see her upbeat spirit and her faith, and the faith of her family and the officers that support, support in this community. I understand we raised about twenty-three thousand. On Friday, you were there, and anything else we can do, we certainly want to do because, number one, people have to recognize we are one family. Whether they like it or not, maybe some are taller and shorter and look a little different than others, but it's a family. So, please share, Chief. And Chief, I know that you and Chief Miller are, kind of look the same, so I wasn't taking him over you, it's just that his guys are just so good-looking. OPD has some good-luckers too, but the only one I know, that's my special guy sitting right over there. I'm sorry, buddy, that's mine. I'm not telling anybody who he is, but he's sitting right over there. But I do want to acknowledge too that across the city, we are having back-to-school events for low-income families and families who fall right into cracks and needed a little help. And the one thing I like about our city, and this is pertaining to Agenda Item D two, that they're going to have something at Lake Eola, but every year we have something in Paramore, Paramore Kids Zone and whatever else. I'm going to do my Jones High School thing as I normally do in some other small schools, and I just want people to know that we're reaching out to you, we understand this economy, and we understand some of the hardships. So, I want to just make sure we get that taken care of. And I too salute Lieutenant Steiner and his family, and I share our sympathy with them from District Five. Now, on to a few other items. I'll start with, that's not D, that was not D two. D two is what I want to talk to. That was, that was D three regarding Eola Park. So, if you go to that Agenda item, you get more information. And I believe it's on August eleventh, what is that date? For the event, for the parks, family parks and recreation. And D two, D three, I saw it somewhere, I saw it somewhere, but anyway, we can look that up later. I think it's August eleventh. Can someone look that up while I'm looking, because I really want to make that announcement for, for the community, so that people can get out there. August eleventh, back-to-school at Lake Eola, and the city rec department is partnering with someone else. But I, while I was on the Ds, I'm sort of skipping around. I want to talk about the Create Program at UCF. This is my second year sponsoring a program where kids in the community can go and learn and be taught. It's what we call different technologies, mostly on our iPads and using computers. We've got quite a bit going on, and we're able to take that to DC just a few weeks ago with the Minority Media Technology Telecom Council. So, I was very thankful for UCF and Stellisong and Victorandel for representing the city and this great program we have with the kids at Jackson Court, at the New Image, and Paramore Kids Zone and all along Paramore, hoping we can introduce it to the entire community, whether seniors and whatnot later on. Now, on Agenda Item, oh, before we get there, Mike Rose just informed me that we do have robocalls, and starting, and Mayor Dyer and Council, I'm really, really thankful. I live in a small community that's mostly working class and some middle class, but we border Colonial and OBT. To be bordered by these major thoroughfares puts us in a class of our own for great adversity. And Chief, I know that your officers have been great in responding to some of the problems we've had there, so I want to say thank you right now. But the robocalls are because of those nuisance signs that keep code enforcement picking them up, and since I hadn't walked in a while, I was out of town, I see the junk car signs are back, but I like the idea of making a nuisance of ourselves with these people who continue to litter our neighborhoods. When I'm out, I know I look like the bag lady picking up signs and picking up litter, but that's what happens when you live near downtown and you live on the two major thoroughfares. So, thank you so much, Mike, for all your work you're doing in lots of other ways, too. Now, on Agenda Item C six, the Board of Zoning Adjustment, there was an item there denying a bar, and I was so happy to see that Council and Mayor. We spent a lot of money along Paramore, closing the Green Parrot, closing the 414, closing Dixie Doodle. Until that neighborhood is reestablished, we don't need another bar until we get the neighborhood stabilized. It's another neighborhood that's right on the tilt, and we're trying to revitalize it, so it's important that we not infuse it with any more negative kinds of businesses. On the facade grant, I happen to like it, and on the gallery at Avalon, I'm just very, very thankful for you guys getting that moving. And of course, we have to talk about air cargo. That is just a great opportunity for jobs and bringing it into our great, great city. No matter where it's located, it's a great idea. And of course, the cameras with H4, high-intensity drug trafficking areas, I'm sure we're going to be another great beneficiary of that, because when you live on a border like OBT, we have certain properties that do things we don't like. And the one thing I know, a few years ago, I wish we had this opportunity again, and we're working with Mike Rose on some of those areas that would impact us, Chief, and that's that given street situation over there. I know we've worked very, very closely together. We're going where we need to go, but when you don't own property, there's nothing you can say. I think the state of Florida has a, is it the Harrah's? There's certain things you can't do. I only own one house here. I own some more property somewhere else, but when you don't own it, you're not going to do anything about it, whether it's for development or anything else. But we are letting people know when there are nuisance to our community or anywhere else, we're doing what we've got to do. So, Mayor Dyer and Council, thank you for the gist of my comments.
We will move then to District Six. Commissioner Rings.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll start off with item H two, approving the agreement between the School Board of Orange County and the City of Orlando for the School Resource Officer Program. More specifically, this is an item where the School Board needs to recognize that we do need more funding for officers at the middle schools and the elementary school levels, simply for officer safety and safety of our school campuses. Two officers should be assigned to the middle schools, and one full-time officer should be assigned at all elementary schools within the city of Orlando. And for those schools that are close to the city and county lines, specifically Carver Middle School and Memorial Middle School, this would be an opportunity to maybe have some assistance from the Orange County Sheriff's Department, to have a deputy at those schools to help before school hours and after-school hours, because there tend to be some problems within the neighborhood with the kids, and there's a need for Orlando police officers and a need for the Orange County deputies to be on-site. And so, this is an opportunity where we really need to look closely at increasing the number of police officers that are assigned to our schools. The principals at these elementary schools really need to feel confident that their campuses are more safe, and obviously, the parents need to feel more confident that their kids are safe on these campuses. And it goes on with the teachers as well, because they need some assistance, and one officer assigned to four elementary schools is just simply not enough. And I'll get right into the community events that I'm going to be hosting or have hosted. I've hosted my Fourth Annual Swim to Survive Event on Saturday, July fourteenth, at the Dr. James R. Smith Pool. The Swim to Survive Event was orchestrated to promote water safety within the residents of Washington Shores, where nearly sixty percent of the residents can't swim. I want to thank Denise Moore, the supervisor for the City of Orlando Aquatics and her team, for doing such a great job and bringing this program about. Many of the children were introduced to swimming lessons for the first time, and they were happy to receive a pool bag that contained flip-flops, a towel, bathing suit and goggles. Sunny Days Swim School, Ms. Shonda Wilking, the owner, operator and instructor, provided swim demonstrations to the kids and the families. She engaged the young people with hands-on swimming instructions. The American Red Cross, thank you, they were there to provide the tote bags. Sinkrose Water Blossoms of Orlando provided two synchronized dance routines, and to see the young children synchronize dancing in the pool made a difference for a lot of the other young kids that are there, and obviously helps to improve, building the confidence among the kids that they can do a lot in the water. And again, the City of Orlando Water Aerobics provided demonstrations, and these were of our seniors. They exercise in the pool, they use the pool a lot, and it helps them improve in their mobility. And again, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to Denise Moore for her leadership in this area and really helping to make our pools safe and our kids able to learn to swim. This past Sunday, July twenty-second, he's now a resident within the city of Orlando, but for nineteen years, he was a Major League Baseball player with the Cincinnati Reds, Barry Larkin. Barry Larkin was inducted into the Baseball Hall of Fame on Sunday, July twenty-second in Cooperstown, New York. And one thing that Barry said was that every player wants to win, and he says further that every player wants to be appreciated and looks for validation. And his inclusion in the Hall of Fame is the ultimate validation, and he wants to thank all of the supporters that really supported him, and Barry is to be commended because he's spent a lot of time here, right here in the city of Orlando, and he have children that attend the local high schools here. And he was a twelve-time All-Star and again, played for the Cincinnati Reds when he was playing baseball. So, again, congratulations, Barry Larkin, for your success. Then coming up is the August the third at Shingle Creek Golf Club, ninety-nine thirty-nine Universal Boulevard, the Red Tie Celebrity Golf Extravaganza. And I'd like to say thank you to my colleagues that are participating. Sorry, Mayor, you're going to be out of town. But I'd like to thank the commissioners that are participating, and we're going to ask that you get there a little early so that you can help greet some of the players. And Commissioner Sheehan, especially thanks to you, and you've got your own little foursome going on, and I know you guys are going to have a great time there, and thank you so much. Then also, that Thursday night prior to the event at August the second at seven PM, we're going to have our special pairings party that's going to be held at the Varsity Club there at the Florida Citrus Bowl. Thank you, Ford King, for your assistance in this effort as well. And we're also going to have a silent and live auction going on, and at our nineteen-hole celebration, which is the awards luncheon celebration on Friday, Nick Anderson, formerly of the Orlando Magic, will be our guest speaker. And so, we're looking to have some great fun and some great opportunities. Also, at the pairings party, Miles J., the jazz player and singer, he's going to be on hand to provide entertainment there at the Varsity Club, along with our local rhythm band, and that's Willie Bacon, graduate of Jones High School, and also All Good Entertainment, Glenn Allgood. So, we're looking for some great times for this weekend. And also, too, at the Red Tie, we do have helicopter ball drop tickets that are five dollars. You can purchase them. You can contact my office and we can get some of them to you. And then, the National Night Out Day of Prayer, helping to keep our community safe, Sunday, August the fifth, two thousand twelve. Join the Orlando Police Department in this annual observance held on the first Sunday in August as they mobilize prayer in Orlando. And Chief, this is a great event, and on this day, they're going to invite people of all faith, all faiths, to pray for our neighborhoods, law enforcement officers, government officials and the military. You can call now and pledge your support for this worthwhile cause, and the first ten churches to pledge will receive fifty National Night Out church fans. So, we're giving out some church fans, too, and so this is a well-supported event, so everybody come out and enjoy. And then also, on Saturday, August the eleventh, I'm hosting the Crime Prevention Walk and Health Fair. Unity in Uniform is also helping to support this event, and we're going to start at eight-thirty and nine o'clock. We're going to line up at eight-thirty at the Washington Shore Shopping Center Plaza, and then we're going to march along Columbia Street to Bruton Boulevard to the Smith Center. And many of the kids that are involved will be receiving book bags, back-to-school book bags, at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. And the Health Fair is to assist many of those children that are needing physicals just prior to going to school. So, Unity in Uniform will be on hand to check blood pressures, perform EKGs, CPR demonstrations and also physicals. So, this is a great opportunity for our kids to come out and enjoy, and our family members to be there to assist the kids and with their physicals. And then, on this past Friday, the twenty-seventh of July, we had the Senior Citizens Police Academy at El Claudia Allen Center. Chief Rooney, Paul Rooney, was on hand to give out the certificates to the graduates, and I believe there are about fifty-seven graduates at the academy. And this was a program that was put on by Officer Tia Pruitt and Neighborhood Watch Coordinator, Georgiana Butler, and of course, the El Claudia Allen Senior Center staff. And it was a great event to see all of these seniors go out and learn a little bit more about the police department and become even more familiar. So, this was a great event, and thank you, Mayor, and was that short enough?
Perfect.
Mayor, before we go down, I forgot to announce Ms. Mercedes Clark's death on Saturday. Ms. Clark, you knew her very well, Mayor, and most of us did, resident of Paramore for eighty, over eighty years, I believe. She was eighty-one, eighty-two. So, we just want to make everyone aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was out of note to do that as well. Okay, we'll move to District One. Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. In the spirit of time, I'll keep my comments short. I'd like to jump on the Wawa bandwagon as well and congratulate them on the opening of their new store at Hoffner and Goldenrod. A lot of things happening in the southeast part of town, and I would encourage everyone to go to our website for District One, which lists all of our community meetings and all of the happenings in the area. On the agenda, I would like to address item C nineteen, which is the adoption for the National Air Cargo Group. I need to declare a conflict. The company I work for is in discussions with that group about a potential lease, and I think it's better if I just abstain from voting. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, we'll move to District Two. Commissioner Ortiz.
Now, Commissioner Gray just broke all records around here.
He did.
Anybody have to stand up and stretch? Never mind. First of all, let me express my condolences to the family of Mark Steiner, and also, just hearing Mrs. Clark's now, these are things that happen unexpectedly, and so, let's keep the families on their prayers. Also, congratulate my good friend, Kid Gibson. I heard Commissioner Stewart talking about him, and I didn't know he was retiring so soon. I thought he was going to stay for another ten years, but it's good to know. He's a great, great officer, and he's done a lot, and a great comrade. Now, talking about Karen Long. Commissioner Sheehan, thank you for bringing her up. We definitely not only, let's help her as much as we can financially, but let's please, We definitely not only, let's help her as much as we can financially, but let's please, please, please keep her on our prayers because those go a long, long way, as we all know. So let's keep that in mind. On Saturday, July 14th, I had the pleasure of welcoming on behalf of our mayor and fellow commissioners, Volaris Airlines. This airline will be flying directly from Orlando to Mexico City. Tourism as well, as we all know, is what keeps this city moving. And this new service is an economic stimulus for not only Orlando, but for the entire region. And it's estimated that they will generate approximately $14.7 million a year for the local economy. So that's great news. On Thursday, July 19th, we had our District Two Neighborhood Leaders Council meeting at the Dover Shores Community Center. And we had two presentations, one by the FBI, Special Agent Bryce Assari, and the other one by the Metropolitan Bureau of Investigation. And that presentation was done by OPD Sergeant Alex Caro. Great presentations, kept everybody really enthusiastic and those guys almost didn't leave the center because they had, the community had tons of questions for them. So I wanna send, convey my sincere thanks to both agencies for allowing these officers and agents to represent those great institutions. In recent days, the Seminole Business Partnership voted on their new Board of Directors and I would like to take this opportunity to sincerely congratulate Mrs. Leela Eagle from Resource Management, Inc., who's the new president, vice president, got lost a little bit here, Vice President Mr. Justin Sinkewicz, Assistant Vice President and Branch Manager for Fairways Credit Union. Secretary is Mr. Yael Aldunate, Branch Manager and Vice President for Popular Community Bank and Business Development Chair. And Mr. Francisco Jaramillo, Director of Investments and Retail Services for Caldwell Banker Commercial. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm very happy and excited to see that our Seminole Business Partnership keeps moving along at such a fast rate. They're really making a difference in that area and we have great plans for the near future. Last week, I attended a meet and greet, Your Neighbor, at the Dover Circle Neighborhood, thanks to Mr. Reggie Coleman from Communications for assisting with the planning of the event. Fire Chief Miller for stopping by and Fire Department Personnel for checking the homes, fire detectors. Also, thanks, thank you to OPD Community Service Officer, Ms. Lindy Moore. She did a great presentation for our kids, bike presentation for them and these kids were really attentive. They had a great time. So Chief, please convey our gratitude. On behalf of our mayor and our commissioners, we had the chance to welcome a new Wawa at Goldenrod as Commissioner Gray just expressed and it was a great event. Wawa is really making a difference in our city, so congratulations. We're really looking forward to have more of them, especially in District Two, if you're listening. I'll be stopping by at our six, not 13, like in District Three, six Neighborhood Night Out event, but we are a lot louder than District Three, so.
Sixteen.
Okay, sixteen, that's fine. We'll still be a lot louder than. On the agenda, I just wanna, I announced earlier that on item, CRA, item one, I was gonna vote no. I'm gonna recant that after speaking to one of our great staff, Ms. Kim King. I don't wanna put you in the spot, Kim, but you are great staff. And I'm gonna recant and I'm gonna vote yes on this item and I wanna thank you for the information that you provided. I appreciate it. And I believe, Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second. By Commissioner Aings, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries and the consent agenda passes. I'm gonna recess without objection, without objection, recess, City Council Meeting, convene the CRA meeting and call on Thomas Chapman, the Director of our CRA. Thomas, new business?
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Item number one on the CRA today is approval of the Downtown Facade and Building Stabilization This program seeks to combine two existing programs, the Downtown Facade Grant Program, which is available in a very restricted area of the Central Business District, as well as the Paramore Facade and Building Stabilization Grant Program. The new program will replace these existing programs and combine them. We think that this would create more additional funding opportunities as well as making funding CRA-wide available. The funding for each proposed application would provide up to 50%, would provide 50% or up to a maximum amount per application throughout the Central Business District, Uptown Neola. That maximum amount will be $5,000 for facade grants, improvements for special, I'm sorry, single-family residences or duplexes, or $20,000 for commercial or industrial buildings, facades. And in the Paramore Heritage Area, we, similarly, there'd be $5,000 maximum for facade owners for single-family homes and duplexes, but also an additional 5,000 totaling $10,000 total for single-family residential or duplexes that also combine facade with building stabilization components. And I'll define building stabilization a little later in this, in this projection, I'm sorry, presentation. Other buildings, commercial and industrial, as in the other areas of the CRA, would qualify for up to $20,000 maximum for facade only and again, an additional $20,000 in Paramore for stabilization for a total of $40,000 for building stabilization and facades in the Paramore area. The funds would be available CRA-wide, there'd be a limit of one grant per property owner or tenant per year. All applications would be pertinent to those properties that are taxable properties within the CRA. And as we've done in other programs and seeking to make these consistent with those, we're adding a criminal background check to our due diligence. The funding criteria would include but not be limited to, from a facade rehabilitation standpoint, removing false facades, painting, replacing doors and windows, certain signage, audience and canopies, as well as exterior lighting. From a building stabilization standpoint, in the Paramore Heritage Area, it would include roof repairs and replacement, as you can see, interior structural improvements, as well as funding for building systems improvements and such as plumbing, heating, ventilation and air conditioning, as well as electrical. In addition, it would provide funding for security fencing in that area and other hardscape The review process would include the Facade Grant Review Committee, which would review and make recommendations regarding each applications. That review committee is comprised of staff, as you see listed, the Assistant Director of the DDB CRA, a representative from the city's Planning Division, that person would be that staff representative that staffs the Appearance Review Board, as well as the city's Historic Preservation Officer. Some of the criteria that the committee would use to review applications include the level of deterioration of building materials and finishes for the applied properties, consistency of proposed building design with the downtown design guidelines, also consistency with the context and architectural character, if you will, of the area of the building, and assessment of the proposed modifications for consistency with both the Appearance Review Board, as well as the Historic Preservation Board standards. If the committee would recommend an approval for $5,000 or less, the Executive Director of the CRA may approve and execute the funding agreement on behalf of the CRA. If the committee recommends an approval for more than $5,000, the application's draft funding agreement would be brought before the CRA for final approval and authorization to execute. And as you can see here, we've mapped out and gone out, staff has gone out and looked at some possible candidates for this funding and if you approve this program, we intend to proactively make sure that we convey the information by approaching some of these property owners and making sure they know that this program is available. As you see, it's spread out throughout the CRA area from the Central Business District and these are all very highly visible properties here, including a Dr. Phillips Historic Building, to your left. The Uptown area. Of course, the Paramore Heritage Planning Area. And finally, the Eola area of the CRA. So I'm happy to answer any questions, Mayor and Commissioners. But pending that, staff is requesting that the CRA repeal the prior policies related to the Downtown Facade Grant Program and the Paramore Commercial Facade and Building Stabilization Grant Program and approve a two-year pilot program of the new combined program, the Downtown Facade and Building Stabilization Program and related guidelines, as well as authorize the Executive Director of the CRA to approve and sign funding agreements on behalf of the CRA for applications seeking assistance totaling $5,000 or less.
Move approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, number two, Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two is approving amendment to the CRA High Wage High Value Jobs Creation Program. Program, as most of you know, was created in 2006 for the express purpose of attracting to, having another incentive tool to attract to the CRA or to downtown Orlando in this case, targeted industries with high wage, high value jobs, and particularly targeted headquarters. The program basically allows an incentive to pay from $1,000 to up to $1,500 per new job introduced into the downtown area based on average wage of 150% of the Orange County average annual wage. It also calls for that, those, that money to be paid out in biannual, biannual payments. Staff is recommending two revisions that comprise this amendment. One would be that the criteria for establishing high wage, high value jobs not only include Orange County's, 150% of the Orange County average wage, but also include 150% of the state of Florida's average annual wage. And secondly, that payments not only be allowed to be made biannually, but also be allowed to be made annually. Both these changes would, these revisions would make the CRA program more consistent with the state's Quality or Qualified Target Industry Tax Refund Program, commonly known as QTI, which we normally partner with, with High Wage High Value Job Creation Program. Any questions?
Questions or a motion?
Move it. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Linum. Discussion, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Thomas.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Number three is approving the High Wage High Value Job Creation Program funding for XOS or Exos Technologies Incorporated, doing business as XOS or Exos Digital, Inc. As you heard, the mayor seeing in his comments, and of course, this is just looking at background, we just talked about the background of the High Wage High Value Program. But Exos is a leading provider of advanced digital media management and monetization solutions for sports organizations in the United States. A little bit of background, founded in 99. By 2005 and 2006, they were awarded the Inc. 500 winner, that is, of the 500 fastest-growing privately-owned companies in the country. 2006, they achieved 80% market share of the United States professional and collegiate sports industry and by 2008 became copyright representation agent for 100 top universities in this country. In 2009, they launched their Southeastern Conference Digital Network. Company has 180 employees. Revenues last year were $33 million and we expect revenues this year to be $39 million. Mark Hudgens, who you heard or met a few moments ago, has characterized the country, the company as being the Microsoft of sports. You can see the products and services. One of the things I heard, one of the ways I had it, heard it explained was that once a live sporting events are complete, then XOS, who has the authority and wherewithal to negotiate any additional usage of any clips, any visual or graphic clips from those, if ESPN wants to use them or Fox Sports wants to use them on their telecast, which they do all the time, for their clients, they have to come to XOS and to make those, those negotiations and those deals. The company, as the mayor said, is currently headquartered both in Lake Mary, Florida, as well as Wilmington, Massachusetts. They're looking to consolidate their headquarters right here in downtown Orlando. From those cities, they would bring in 57 existing high wage, high value jobs from Lake Mary and would create another 46 new high wage jobs over a three-year period for a total of 103 jobs. Those jobs would average just over, just under $62,000 per year. The capital investment, as you can see there, exceeds $3.3 million. CRA would provide up to $126,000 over a six-year period. That breaks down to $1,000 for each of the 57 existing jobs to transfer in from Lake Mary and $1,500 for each of the 46 new jobs to be created over a three-year period. As we said earlier, this program was designed to work in leverage or to leverage state, the state Qualified Target Industry Program and other economic development incentives. As you can see here, the incentive proposal combines the $126,000 from the CRA with the QTI from the state, investment of $239,200, as well as a local match for that of $59,800 for a total package incentive for $425,000. Any questions?
Questions or a motion?
Move, move approval. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Linum. Discussion, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the motion carries. All right.
Good shape. Good job.
Okay, then, any further business come for the CRA?
There's none, Mayor. Thank you.
And we will adjourn the CRA meeting and convene the Neighborhood Improvement District meeting. We are simply accepting meeting minutes of the Advisory Council's, or motion to accept those minutes.
Some of.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Aings, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. We will adjourn the Neighborhood Improvement District meeting. We will reconvene the City Council meeting. We'll move to hearings, ordinances, first read. Madam Clerk, if you would read that.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to the Land Development Code, amending Sections 58.1100, 58.1104, 61.342, 62.502, 62.505 and 62.506 Orlando City Code as it relates to street-level commercial use areas in downtown, providing updated terminology, minimum street-level design standards for certain areas of downtown, allowable uses within mandatory street-level commercial use areas, exceptions for certain existing buildings, technical amendments and correcting cross-references, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and actions, codification, correction of scrivener's errors and an effective date.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Let's move to hearings, ordinances, second reading. Madam Clerk, number one.
Mayor, excuse me, did you want to ask for a motion on that, that I just read, because the second reading would require?
Yes, actually, I do.
Yes.
Okay, so that is an ordinance that requires the second public hearing to be heard after 5:00 unless there is a motion to hold the second public hearing at our regularly scheduled hearing at 2:00 and that is passed by a majority plus one. Motion by Commissioner Stewart.
And I second.
Second by Commissioner Linum. All in favor of moving the second reading to our regularly scheduled 2:00 meeting indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so that passes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Hearings, ordinances, second read.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the city's adopted growth management plan by amending the city's future land use map designation from residential medium intensity to residential high intensity for certain real property generally located north of East Jackson Street, south of Mariposa Street, east of South Eola Drive and west of South Summerlin Avenue, and address is 225 South Eola Drive, 608 Mariposa Street, 601 East Jackson Street and 609 East Jackson Street, comprised of .62 acres, more or less. Also changing, changing the zoning designation from R3BT in part and R3Btan in part to MXD2T in part and MXD2TAN in part for the same real property, directing amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors and an effective date.
Some of.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Number two was deleted, so let's move on to number three.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to the Municipal Planning Board, amending Part 1E, Chapter 65 Orlando City Code to reduce the regular membership of the board from 11 to 9 in accordance with the recommendations of the 2011 Citizen Board Review Committee, providing updated statutory references, eliminating redundant provisions, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and actions, codification, correction of scrivener's errors and an effective date.
Some of.
Motion by Commissioner Aings.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that? Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Ordnances, first read. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida certain real property generally located at the southeast corner of Silver Star Road and North John Young Parkway, comprised of 8.37 acres, more or less, and amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as industrial on the city's official future land use map, and designating the property as industrial commercial district with the Wakava overlay district on the city's official zoning map series. Providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move.
I'll take that as a motion, Commissioner.
Was that three or five?
Motion, three.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, you got the second one. Oh, okay.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Second. Second by Commissioner Ortiz. Anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, number two, this one's yours, Commissioner.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida rezoning certain land generally located north of West Robinson Street, east of North Paramore Avenue, south of West Colonial Drive, and west of Interstate 4, comprised of approximately 68 gross acres of land, from PTPH in part, IGTPH in part, and MXD2TPH in part, to PDTPH on the city's official zoning map series. Providing special land development regulations for the PD zoning district, directing amendment of the city's official zoning map series, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. And just so we know, that's the PD for the Creative Village. Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and the motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today, July 30th. I thank those of you who were in attendance and those who tuned in either on TV or through the website. Commissioner Ortiz.
Did we do the Neighborhood Improvement District?
We did.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
We did. Okay, thank you.